Good afternoon. I'm now going to call a Wednesday, September 11th, 2024 meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. On Wednesday, March 29th, 2023, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an act making appropriations for fiscal year 2023, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the Mass Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through March 31st, 2025. Welcome. We are live and on Zoom today. Would you join me in saluting your flag?
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman. To the flag of the United States of America and two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, easy justice, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Commissioner Statey.
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Shea.
You want to make a motion?
President, we're going to go into executive session. We need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. We go into executive session pursuant to Master on law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, subsection A, subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so it declares.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could, and again, I was a few minutes late. This is gentlemen in the audience. Is there something that you need to talk to us quickly about?
No, I do wait.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure you were okay. All right, I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded. Go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to go into executive session. We will be returning to complete the entire agenda, which is a regularly scheduled agenda. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, John.
Welcome back. We're back on the record on our Wednesday, September 11th, 2024 meeting in the Norfolk County Commission.
Okay.
We completed our executive session. Number four, acceptance of minutes.
Sorry, say it again. Minutes?
Number four.
Uh, motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Wait, wait, wait. There's your pass. Motion to approve the open session minute, minutes of September 4th, 2024.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need to vote. One more.
I'll make a motion to approve, I call, the executive session minutes for September 4th, 2024, uh, to be released at the time that the chair so declares.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to vote on that. Number five, appointments here, none. Number six, public comment. Every meeting, we have a agenda item for public comment should anyone want to come in and comment to us on call or on Zoom. And now is the time for public comments, so I believe we have one for sure. And if we have any others, we'll take them.
The gentleman in the back.
Sir, come on up and have a seat. There's a big chair there.
Okay.
All we need is your name and address here.
Joe Gruff, 54 Hill Street, Randolph.
Okay. Good afternoon.
How did you have a question over here on the, uh, did you hide a person for a collect job? Was that, I didn't see that on your website posted. It's over here.
Is this today?
Yes.
No action has been taken on that yet. That's proposed. That'll be coming up.
That's proposed. We're all right in place. Public comment.
Yo, this is my last question about this one.
Right, we haven't got there yet.
Oh, you want to come back?
No action has taken, been taken on it.
Okay, there's this one there. If you really have public comments, you have right to ask questions because sometimes you can ask them again.
You can still ask your question.
Oh, you can? Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, that was the question.
Okay.
Was that job posted and, you know, was anything done on your website? So you guys did appointments, right?
It was not posted, no.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
All right, we're going to get to personnel quite quite soon.
Any other public comment?
Any other public comment? Last call. Seeing no more, we'll go further. Number eight, number seven, old business. None. Number eight, personnel matters for consideration.
Richard, how about if I do the first one because it has a little bit of a caveat to it?
Go ahead, Peter.
Yep, sure.
Commissioner Collins.
Uh, this is a vote that provides FMLA benefits. And as a result, uh, we can't refer to the person's name. So it's a notice of FMLA effective 9/6/24. Name and department redacted in accordance with Health Insurance, Portability and Accountability Act of 1996 guidelines. And we're just going to reference the application number, which is 09-24-01. So move.
I'll second that motion. Made by Commissioner Collins.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
On the NFL.
All right?
Yeah.
Next.
That was just tricky.
Treasurer's office, I move the, uh, notice of resignation of Gavin Tolan of Quincy as intern at the rate stated, effective date 8/23/24. So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Yes, you speak to this, Barry Baker.
Director, come on.
On behalf of the Commissioner's office, uh, I want to thank Treasurer Bellotti for giving us access to Gavin this past summer. As an intern, he worked both with the Treasurer's Office Retirement Board as well as our office. Um, in my time with the county, uh, Gavin has, uh, widely exceeded any prior interns, um, efforts to, um, bring along some long-awaited improvements in filing, um, indexing systems. He was a tremendous asset, a great, great worker, and we're going to miss him. We wish him, we wish him well. So thanks again to Treasurer Bellotti and to Gavin for his great service this past summer. That was the treasurer, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Accept the resignation of Gavin Tolan. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Maintenance.
Yes, uh, I would say we regret, uh, move the approval of the notice of retirement of James Regan Raytree as our plumber with the salary stated effective date 10/124.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
James has worked very well, uh, in that position for the last several years. I think all of us know him. He'll be missed, I think, because of some, uh, family personal things he'd been forced to, uh, leave a little bit earlier than he planned, but we wish him the best of luck and we thank him for service.
And Mr. Chairman, we'll move to post without delay.
Okay, so we're going to be posting, looking for a replacement?
Yes, sir.
Post this week, next week?
Uh, within the next week or two.
Okay. Next, registry of deeds.
Uh, move appointment, notice of appointment of Carol Graham of Waymouth as senior clerk, uh, at the salary stated effective 9/30/24, replacing a previous incumbent, Jordan Freeman. Good.
Motion, comments, motion first.
Uh, the motion's made. I'll, I'll second the motion for discussion only.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'd like to, uh, through you, Joe, I'd like to send it over to the county director for comment.
Uh, for the Commissioner's consideration, this particular blue paper came over from the register. Uh, we were not participant, participants in the hiring process. The register did not follow the employee handbook process for, um, the requisite hiring of this individual. I recommend denying this application until such time as the register follows the handbook. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any comments?
And when it's appropriate, may I be heard?
Let us finish this first. So your motion is to deny.
Uh, well, there was a motion. He made a motion. I made a second for discussion only.
Okay. Any further motions?
Uh, do we want to hear from the register? One is before we vote, or do you want to have discussion after? It's your call, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think, I think I would say, as I speak, maybe personally, uh, there seems to be this ongoing discussion, uh, on a
Right.
on a regular basis, uh, between our, by the way, congratulations, our newly elected Democratic primary person, Mr. O'Donnell, and us in terms of the, the use of the book. Now, I know that, um, for some of the things and, and other things we can't get into, uh, it wasn't ratified or it wasn't endorsed or not only unions had it, but my understanding is we're moving close to that. And I feel that, um, as a member of the Personnel Board, not as a commissioner, but as a Personnel Board, we do have a new book, and I think it behooves everybody to recognize that and to follow that as our proper procedure. Uh, it has nothing to do personally with Carol Graham and has nothing to do also with you and your, your respective position. But there is a process to follow. And I don't recall, honestly, in the four years I've had the privilege of serving here, of us actually like, you know, ever denying an appointment, I don't think we have, other than maybe on procedure. I think we're just, we're trying to establish a procedure bill. We need to kind of get on the same page. It would be a great thing if we could kind of get that issue behind us. I know we have other issues. I recognize that. We recognize that. And maybe in the years ahead, we can kind of solve some of them, but this would be one that we'd like to kind of put behind us. That's where, that's where I'm coming from. Hope you appreciate that.
May, may I address that, or?
Mr. Chairman.
Are we going to take a vote? We are going to take a vote either way, right?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Bill.
So my motion was to, yeah, okay.
Sure. And I have something to say too.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm over here because, you know, the registry, you know, is trying to operate and, uh, I know we've done a good job. I think the residents know we're doing a good job. And Carol Graham, uh, is a person that needs a job, so we should be here about helping people. Trying to help somebody that, uh, is looking for a job and actually, in my opinion, is probably more qualified, uh, and, and we need to get people in. I know there were budget cuts, uh, but this position is an open position and we need to get people in and get trained. Uh, you know, it, it's, it's not fair to the current staff when there's a, a vacant position and it's, it's not getting filled. Um, and, and again, I'm here to ask each one of you, what will it take to get, uh, Carol Graham hired? Because you mentioned a process and, and that's, that's where I have some questions. Um, on, when I sent blue papers over on March 1st, it was, it was Louise Pizzano. The blue papers were accepted. And then you cut the position because it was, you know, budget time and you cut the position. But the blue paper that we sent over got accepted. Um, other times, blue papers I've sent over got accepted. Uh, on February 16th, and again, we prepared the blue paper. I executed the blue paper because on February 7th, Noel DeBona submitted a resignation saying he was leaving that day. And we have, under the law, they got to get paid. Now, we processed that. That paper was accepted. Now, there's another issue with that when, you know, you people paid him more, but that's another issue for another day. And why am I bringing this up? It is inconsistent application when blue papers get sent over. And as recent as July 17th, we sent a blue paper over because Margaret Comer resigned. And it, it was in your interest because you were hiring her for the maintenance department. You accept the blue paper and it's, it's, it's there. So I just want to know, it's a vacant position. I sent the blue paper over in March for the person that, that, uh, left. And, and again, here's, I, I would like to make this all a part of the record. This was a blue paper that was sent over for the person that resigned. Just like Noel DeBona resigned. It wasn't accepted. So it's a vacant position. And that position, uh, should be filled. And so there's some inconsistencies. On one hand, you accept the blue paper for different reasons. I'm just saying, be consistent. I've sent the blue paper over now, uh, with Carol Graham. And we sent it over because we did try to send over. I guess now there's a new process. You've got to do a requisition form and all this bureaucratic things that Director Cronin has set up. We sent it over in June, right? Uh, again, that blue paper for, uh, Jordan Freeman never even, to my knowledge, even got before you. You three commissioners are the ones that are supposed to be doing the blue papers. And I'm coming over here respecting your position, knowing that, you know, you're right. I have to come over and get, get approval. But at the same time, Carol Graham, the blue papers are all filled out. It's a needed position. We did follow. You know, I mean, at some point, I can't wait. That paper from Jordan Freeman, which is the position we're trying to fill, was sent over in March. Did that blue paper ever get in front of you? I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know. I don't think it did. That's the position we're trying to fill. That's since March. It's, it's now September, okay? September, we need to fill this position. Carol Graham, as we've done what we've always done, we've interviewed, we've gone through it. That doesn't mean we're not following process. I know you want to do Corey's and, and things of that sort. Do it. But what is it going to take to get Carol Graham's blue paper, uh, signed? And also, I, I think we've got to keep in mind, and, and I know you referenced it, the court case. A decision came down in June, which you people have spent legal money fighting and the judge denied it. But the judge there said that, uh, yes, you have certain laws that confer upon the commissioners the authority, uh, no, nothing in general laws, Chapter 35, Section 48 to 56, confers upon the commissioners the authority to unilaterally decide not to hire a candidate for an approved and budgeted position, um, for the registry's operations, whose proposed salary is consistent with the approved, with that approved in the budget. Nor do the statutes confer upon the commissioners the authority to, uh, hire such a candidate on a temporary basis where the register wishes to hire the candidate permanently. By doing so here, the commission is acting as the county personnel board, which, Mr. Commissioner State just referenced, in effect, you know, intruded upon the register's authority over registry personnel matters. They exceeded their statutory authority. I'm coming here. We just want the paper signed so we can get someone here. What's changed is that decision is, is saying, look at, you know, there are rules. I know I was, the last time I was here in June and I got lectured by the county director that, that his handbook beats a collective bargaining agreement. I disagree with that. At the same time, I think what the judge has said, and there's been a number of judges that have ruled for the registry, is that you can write whatever you want, but that, you still got to follow the law. And I, I, you know, so I, I don't want to keep, you know, oh, he's not following the process. Because every time I'm told I'm not following the process and I'm not following the law, the courts have said that the registry has won and that the registry, that the people that aren't following process and the law, uh, and, and not to get into it. So I guess what I'm saying is, and you don't want to hear it, I, I know that, but at the same time, it's so disheartening to, to come over here, uh, uh, and, and I, I will continue to operate and, and, and fight for the registry. And we need this position filled. So what is it going to take to get that blue paper filed? What specifically would change our mind, Commissioner Collins, or Commissioner Statey? Or Commissioner Shea, Commissioner Statey?
Well, let me backtrack. You said a lot. As always, you did a good job as a lawyer. You're a great advocate. No matter what, you know those cases, uh, that you have cited are correct. I don't disagree with you, but the whole resolution is yet to be determined. As you know, it's on appeal. So, you know, as any good lawyer, you're taking the arguments that favor you and I commend you for that, but I also recognize the fact that it's still yet to be resolved. So let's put that aside for a minute. And on the other hand, too, when this was issued in March, I could be wrong, but we might have had a hiring freeze in effect, in which case we weren't hiring anyone, I think.
This was a?
It was March.
This was a resignation. Commissioner Collins is correct. It was a resignation.
So not quite sure if we acted on this or didn't act on this. I can't speak, but it's why we didn't fill it. That might have been because of a hiring freeze.
And we've lived by that. I mean, that, that's a whole other issue.
My understanding is simply, you keep saying, what needs to be done? And my, the crux of it is, just if you can, follow a new procedure, whatever it might be. There's a new process that requires you to fill out a, a blue form and a few other things. Get it over to our office, make sure Michelle sees it, and then we'll act on it. You know, I don't know what else to say.
But that's what we did in this case. We, we filled out the blue papers. We put the resume. I mean, for the one that's in front of you, for Carol Graham. And again, the only reason I brought up the resignation, I'm just trying to figure out why the position isn't being filled because.
We don't have that on Carol Graham. Miss, Mrs., Miss Graham, you don't have it yet.
The blue paper. It's right there. Yeah. And, and all the papers were sent over and things like that. So that blue paper was put on the agenda. It's a valid blue paper. That's, I mean, you, you just said, get the blue paper signed, get over here. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to respectfully, just trying to get someone who, as I said, I think would be an asset to the registry, probably is more qualified, as is a lot of people at, at our registry, are probably more qualified and we're lucky to have them. I just need to get somebody in for the benefit of the registry and the people that we serve.
Without going back to page one and your comments about, I don't think I've ever voted against them. You know, I don't think that's come before us until now. It's, it's a valid one and I feel the same way. But I, it is controversy on these blue papers. I hate to use that word. We were cast aside a year or two, maybe before that. It's more than a year and a half ago. Even before we were doing, right during the management study, there, there was no book. The book, when we realized the book is so many years old and why hadn't something been done? So great. So we decided to try to come up with a new employee handbook. It was a gigantuan project, just turned into it the way it is, the way laws have changed, the way legalese, et cetera, et cetera. We get this all done and now some people don't want to agree or look at the handbook. It's just a part of doing business. Uh, I don't know why, and you, this is not IBM Corporation. This is not the National Football League. I mean, this is a public entity where the taxpayers are the, are the, are the customers. And we, we, we had decided to update the handbook. We're not rewriting the Bible here. We're ready to go. It's ready to go. All of a sudden, it, it's a big deal. It was a big deal when it wasn't up to date. It was a big deal. We didn't do anything. And I remembered specifically at the meeting saying, well, what happened the last 25 years? Why haven't we talked about this before? Well, it's done. I'm not going to take another blue paper when we're arguing about two more on this, if, if, if it's got the same issues. Now, outside, inside, it probably makes it somewhat different, but the fact of the matter is, we're just looking for uniformity on the blue paper and we're working hard, including today, without discussing anything else, uh, on that subject. And we're working with the union also and, uh...
But as the appointing authority, I just want to know how to get the blue paper signed. I tried to, we tried to follow your new procedures, sent a requisition form over and the blue papers just don't. That's a resignation form. I don't know why a resignation form didn't end up in front of you. Um, and all I'm saying is, at some point, you know, we, you put some extra layers. We're trying to do that and then nothing gets done because the county administration, the county director, he, he, he doesn't put it in front of you. You three are the ones that are supposed to be making the decision. So get, you know, how does, how does that blue paper, so I guess respectfully, Mr. Chairman, we, you know, you, you know, now you've got to make a requisition and all that. We did that.
We're going to do what the, what the, what the county handbook calls for. That's all.
So, so what needs to be done out of that county handbook that will get that signed, get that paper signed?
This or the one for Carol Graham?
Well, obviously, I mean, I wouldn't think a paper for someone resigning should have been, you know, not put in front of you. I mean, I don't know how controversial that can be, but Carol Graham is replacing this person because, you know, you cut, you cut six bu- budgeted positions out of there. So Jordan was in one. She left and so the resignation was put over. And since, since March, you know, it, it hasn't been filled. And I recognize there were hiring freezes and that, but it's time, it's, it's, it's September. It's time to fill a position.
Excuse me, John. Commissioner Collins.
Sure. So, John, what does the registry have to do that they haven't been doing in order to have new employees hired?
Primarily engage the County Commission's Human Resources Department for every single, um, activity, whether it's a resignation, uh, an internal promotion or an outside promotion. That information is well-defined in the handbook. The register's amnesia on this is mystifying. I have no idea why he's asking questions that have been answered multiple times, including correspondence that was sent to him in June and again on August 16th. This is all well-defined. All the other departments are following it, Peter. But to be more specific, he needs to engage Michelle at her office to begin the process for each of those employee actions, um, from scratch, for each of them. He's not done that.
I'm sure you're, you're not the person that does all that bill. So who's the person in your office that?
We've engaged. So, so once again, um, one thing I don't have amnesia on is the only person that's been found to have violated the law is you, Mr. Director. And unfortunately, the three commissioners get spelled into that because you violated the law. So once again, I'm just trying to avoid the, these circumstances. So it, it shouldn't be that hard. This person's a well-qualified person. He's been interviewed. We went through a deed. We've done everything. Now, you want to put another layer in here? We'll gladly do it. But the fact is that that blue paper on a resignation didn't even make it in front of you, to my knowledge. Well, no one said that they've signed it or didn't sign it. Maybe you did. You know, you can do that. I just, I know that blue paper.
Anytime during the Waymouth play, anytime during the process, particularly, say, of the one on our agenda today, did you or anyone in your department, um, uh, reach out for, uh, Michelle Lamodini or HR to begin that process? And as John has said.
I, I know, I know we sent, you, you have a new, like, added layer of bureaucracy. You've got to make a requisition form.
Wait a minute. Now, what's needed, Colin, some an added layer of bureaucracy?
Why don't you jump in when he says I had amnesia, Mr. Chair?
What was that?
Why don't you jump in when he says I have, I have amnesia? So, you know, I guess my comments provoke, uh, but his don't. Uh, any, it is what it is. You guys, you know, I, I, I hear what you're saying. So it's not going to be signed. You know what? Let's see. We've had two, two wins in litigation. I guess, you know, we'll, we'll have to see again.
Touche.
If that's the way.
But, but again.
And again, when you say on appeal, it doesn't detract that two Superior Court judges in two separate cases, including the appeals court judge and the SJC, a single justice, uh, has made favorable. It could all change. Like you say, we've been around a while. We know things could change.
Oh, hey, that's a nice, we're in a nice setting. You never know.
You could hit a home run and a grand slam.
Could be a hail mary.
But that aside, I really want to get, I, I, it would just be nice to get Carol Graham hired. That, that's, that's all I'm saying.
But I understand too, and I echo and support what our chair is saying. Again, when I came on here, we had the Abraham Report. We had a personnel book that was last looked at, what, in the 50s? You know, it's been a long time. So with change, there's resistance. I understand that. With change, there's always a little bit of like pushback. I understand that. Having been a teacher and having gone through different superintendents and different people on the school board saying, we want this, we want that. I get that. But we have this book now that has been vetted and has been discussed and the unions have agreed to. And we've had some discussion. I think even the Aggie School, uh, finally the teachers' union, we got a memorandum of agreement and the Yankee School now has agreed as well. So basically, all our unions and all our people in the county now agree that this new book is the way to move forward. So in the interest of moving forward, can we just agree to that? And whatever that extra layer you may or may not like, it just might be something more to do. And I think if you do that, we're going to move forward. We'll move forward, Billy. That's really, it's kind of silliness in a way. I mean, I, I get, I got your arguments before when that wasn't fully vetted or wasn't agreed to or it was a union issue. Understood. But the unions, and our, from my understanding is, we're on board on this.
Again, you know, this is just trying to, there's state laws. There's, there's state laws that need to be followed. And, uh, again, I'm just trying to get someone appointed. And, uh,
I understand.
Just trying to work through this because.
We are.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh,
You want to do it the way?
And, and, and again, um, you know, the last time I was here, uh, Director Cronin very clearly said that the handbook trumps the collective bargaining agreement when those two people didn't get their promotions. And I was told that a, that the written legal opinion was going to be forwarded to me and I've never received it. That was back in June. So can that be forwarded today?
Just sit tight. Can't say more than that, but just, if I could, a little patience, please, please.
I've been waiting since June for that.
It's more than days.
It's a pressure.
It is, it is. Go ahead, John.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the register was handed a folder a moment ago that contains some blue papers that prepared by our office, consisting of two previous vacancies that he has refused to sign to date. So we'll ask him to put some consideration into signing the blue papers that were prepared by this office, not his. That is the process.
Okay. Oh, so that's what's hanging it up that, uh...
It's a number of things, but that's, that's two positions for the register.
So for, for a number of positions, not to go back, but those blue papers that you signed that I prepared, they were okay because you were cutting our budget. You were giving Noel DeBona some extra money. And, uh, oh, you needed to hire someone at the maintenance department. So you accepted those blue papers I prepared. But now because I, we prepared a blue paper, I'm just trying to understand, for this thing, it can't be signed because we prepared the blue paper. And one of the reasons we prepared the blue papers are, there are laws when people leave with, uh, that they need to get paid within a, a week or two, whatever it is. And we fill them out right away. And believe me, if we didn't fill them out, they wouldn't have gotten filled out And believe me, if we didn't fill them out, they wouldn't have gotten filled out in a timely manner and in a legal manner. So, yeah, we'll take a look. But I'm just, now I understand it. So you're saying these blue papers are acceptable, some of them, when we fill them in, but others aren't acceptable. That's an inconsistent process, and it's on your end, not on my end.
It's in the handbook. Thank you, Mr. Director.
Thank you.
Take a look at it. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're still on the red matter of the appointment.
Yeah, we're still on that.
So you made a motion we have to vote on.
Are you going to keep your motion on there? Are you going to withdraw?
I think it's light a discussion. I'm going to withdraw that motion, and maybe we can get some.
I'll withdraw my second.
Yeah, I withdraw it, Mr. Chairman.
What is your pleasure?
I'd make the, we table that maybe for next week or table it for now.
Table until.
Until the forms that we've discussed could be properly filled out and everything.
That'd be great.
All right, let's, let's do it that way.
Motion made and seconded to table a motion until further date. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that matters table. Norfolk County Agricultural School.
Thank you. I move the following appointment of the Aggie, Norfolk Aggie, first notice of appointment of Matthew Keating of Arlington as a PE and health instructor at the rate stated effective 9/12. He's replacing Chris O'Donnell. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Next.
Move notice of contingent employment of Hope Andrew Paulson as a substitute instructor at the rate stated effective date 9/12. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Move contingent employment for Mary Alice Howard of Paulson as substitute at the rate stated effective 9/12/24. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Move contingent employment for Ali Hallestein of Sharon as a sub-instructor at the rate stated effective date 9/12. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
These are all substitute instructors. Move contingent employment of David Torrey of Norfolk, Mass. at the rate stated 9/12/24.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote.
And the last two, notice move approval of contingent employment for Mary Petey of Palmont, Mass. at the rate stated for substitute instructor 9/12. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Next.
Last one, move approval and notice contingent employment of Lisa Garrett of Wolfville, Mass., substitute instructor at rate stated effective 9/12/24. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Next, payroll expense warrant.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you wish. We only have two items, I believe. Move approval for the warrant list of 9/11/24. First item, move approval of 25-10 payroll of the county, the amount of $147,646.84. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, it is a vote. Next.
And the other one before me is move approval of 09-02-25, the expenses of the county, the sum of $109,235.10. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman.
Number 10, reporting American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two quick items. The commissioners will note there are no ARPA awards before you this week for consideration. However, there are two basic updates. I wanted to let the commissioners know there are 11 applications currently in the portal. 11 at level one. It's a fair amount of activity that is looming. Two follow at level two, Brookline and Milton. So I expect to see some applications before you in the next several weeks. Of note, we've notified the communities as we wind down the obligation period to put in what we're calling excess or above a lot in application ideas, just in the event that we have additional funds that emerge that need to move into grant applications that are approved and ready to go. So that would revert anything. There are nine such applications in the portal, which is a good indication that several of the communities that understand this idea and want to position themselves to be favorably thought of if that funding does surface. So at this time, I just want to let the commissioners know there's some activity out there. It's looming a week or two away, and I will keep updated as soon as they move forward. Thank you.
Any questions, Director Cronin?
No, it's fine.
Okay, moving right along. We have no ARPA warrants approved, correct?
Correct.
Sorry. Number 12, reports from procurement department. Bid openings and contract awards, lease of mailing equipment at Norfolk County Agricultural School. Good afternoon, Amy. Why don't you, John?
This is Trish.
Trish. We met earlier. Yes, I have just, it's a five-year lease, so it is under the $10,000, but it needs a year approval, and it's for a postage and mail machine of the state contrast.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner?
Move approval of the lease of the postage machine that presented?
Okay, it's all, it's off of the state list and it's under $10,000.
Yes.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to move approval?
He made the motion, I already seconded.
And you already seconded. A lease of mailing equipment at Norfolk County Agricultural School, and the winner is? What's the name of the lease?
Q U A D I E N.
Go ahead, John.
Q U A D I E N. Q U A D I E N, Mr. Chair.
An existing company? Do you do business?
Yes, yes. This is a.
All right. Any last comment on the? It's the only equipment at the high school. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what's the name? Number 13, fiscal year first supplemental budget transfer of capital for approval in your package. Director Cronin.
Cronin.
Well, Cronin, Commissioner Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just give Mr. Buckley a chance to pull up the FY '25 supplemental budget page for your viewing pleasure. It's all installed in your packet. I'll go officially through this model for September advisory board, which is to be held next week, advisory board meeting at the agricultural school. This afternoon, I wish to announce that we closed FY '24 with a surplus of $3.407 million. Seems like a lot of money, but 2 million of it was, $2 million of that was capital money that was approved in FY '24 but not spent. That was for the debt of Superior Court project. Get to that in a minute. So the real surplus was in the 1.4 million dollar range. As you can see, Bill, I'm going to ask you to just make that a little larger viewing format. See, follow.
Do we have, do we have a handout on this?
Yeah, it's in your packet. It looks like this. You're holding it in your right hand.
This way?
That is it.
Okay, thank you.
From that 1.4, the immediate need is to set aside $730,426 for the FY '25 budget set aside pursuant to general law. And after you move the 2 million aside, which you'll vote on separately, they'll left a true surplus of $677,2481 for the remainder of fiscal year '25. Not a lot, or certainly not enough that we have been accustomed to pass the deal with things like stabilization deposits, capital budget, which we don't have this year and so forth. It's just enough to deal with urgent issues. This afternoon, I'm asking you to consider a total of $192,778 worth of items, which will leave us just under half a million dollars for the remainder of the fiscal year. Before I get into what those few items are, I just want to give the commissioners a brief profile of our position. Under number one, under notes, you can see our overall surplus, once you remove that $2 million item, is well below what we've seen over the last eight years. It's reflective of our revenue collections obviously being suppressed. Under number two, I wish to announce that our stabilization fund balance grew from just over 6 million last year to 6.372. A lot of that has gained interest, and we're still keeping pace with the number being 16.8% of our operating budget. Remember, our goal according to the Abraham's group report should be 20% in stabilization. So certainly, when we go back to those days when we have more revenue coming in, we'll put more into stabilization and raise that number closely to 20, which is our goal. But we're not falling behind, which is the difference. Number three is our OPEC contribution towards our liability. As the commissioners know, as I mentioned, when we have excess funds, we've been known to apply some of that towards the OPEC liability. However, in the years like this year and last year, we simply put in our regular $100,000, which is appropriated in our budget. According to the most recent Gatsby report that was provided to us in June of 2023, our overall liability covered at around $36.6 million, which was well below the $40.1 million liability that we saw a year earlier. Most of that is because people are coming off of our plants. So some savings there. So the number's going in the right direction, and most of all, we're making regular and recurring payments towards that liability. Now, into the supplemental piece. So our information technology director, CIO Sam Evans, has secured a grant with the Office of Grant Research at State for a municipal local cybersecurity program. This is a $60,778 grant, which was awarded to the county on July 11, 2024. This is a reimbursable grant. We need to front the money, and then we'll receive the funds back from the state once we expend them against the grant purpose. CM has asked for these funds to be supplemented into three different categories, professional technical services, computer supplies, and software. Next is the Wilson Golf Course. They require $32,000 to finish off the tennis court and design fees. The commissioners may recall that originally we were looking at ARPA money to put a restroom on, I think it was hole 15 of the golf course. That ARPA project was sunset because the cost and the project were getting out of control and frankly beyond the, beyond our ability to fund it. So we pivoted those resources towards rehabilitating several of the tennis courts we're in, which are in very difficult shape. We needed a study done. So right before Nancy Rockwell left, we contracted with Crowley Associates to do some engineering services and that, this money supplements that work. Once their study is done, we'll use ARPA money to, based on the rest of the cost, fund the total replacement and repair of several of the tennis courts. The next is the registry of deeds. Each year for the last several years, we take a snapshot in the spring to build the registry of deeds budget based on known spending to date. I believe that snapshot is usually done in February, and we extrapolate best, to the best of our ability, what the registry may spend, and that becomes the appropriation. And then in September, the following few months after the close, we assess where that spending actually landed. With the July trial balance before you today, we received that recently. We now see that the registry's spending was in fact below the number that we had estimated. So subsequently, we're recommending that you revisit that appropriation and reduce it by $69,893, so that it is exactly 2.5% above prior year's, actual prior year spend. The commissioner's office, there are two items. We have, we have supplemented auditing services in FY '24 for the FY '23 audit. Remember, we hired Powers and Sullivan to do two audits back to back. They completed FY '23 last year, and they began doing FY '24. No, excuse me. They completed FY '22 last year, and they began FY '23 at the end of fiscal year '24. They haven't finished it yet. They're closing in, should have some results in the next several weeks to a month. So the monies we had budgeted last year for that additional audit catch-up reverted. So we have to supplement it now. All right, that's $50,000. We do have money in our budget to pay for the FY '24 budget, and that'll start probably right after January. So we're almost caught up. The next is replenishing the reserve, funding for $50,000, which we've been using to augment the contractual services in our procurement unit while we reform that unit and hire a new CPO. So we'll be looking to augment that line item, which has been used to pay for the contracted services. So overall, the supplemental draw is $192,778. And as I mentioned, at least it's just under half a million dollars for the rest of the fiscal year. Regarding transfers, Bill, can you just? Yep, thank you. There are two departments looking for transfers. The schools are looking to move $40,500 out of contractual services and into permanent salaries. I know the treasurer, the school business manager is here to see if you have any questions on that item. The treasurer's office also looking to move 900,000, excuse me, 900 dollars out of temp salaries into longevity, some oversight in the budget to fund that particular item. Observations, mainly for your benefit, but I also inform the advisory board, these are just notes of interest that I like to share with the various elected stakeholders. The county is tracking currently deficiency in the employee health insurance fund. The deficiency emerged in FY '24 as a result of revenue deposits for this fund landing in the general fund. The treasurer reports a $250,898 deficiency at the end of July 2024. The county will address this shortfall later in fiscal year '25 as supplemental fund availability develops. I've had several conversations with staff as well as our assistant treasurer on this. It's something we've been tracking for the last several years, and we'll try to rectify its revenue receipts allowance.
That's pretty much.
It is.
What happened there? We're not taking enough out of the checks?
No, the checks were inadvertently deposited in the general fund in prior fiscal years. So it created this rolling deficiency. And that general fund that received the checks, actually, that, those monies are long gone. They've been expended or deposited. So as a result, we'll have to catch up and finish the reconciliation likely in the spring of 2025. In FY '24, the county requested a $2 million transfer from the capital improvement fund to install a new HVAC system in Dedham Superior Court. There was no activity in '24, so these funds reverted. That's what created a big part of that surplus that I mentioned earlier. The county now requests a reauthorization of this amount in FY '25 as the plans are proceeding. We have meetings with Habib every two weeks to proceed with the building management system at Dedham District Board and this HVAC project at Dedham Superior Court. Both of these projects are expected to be ready for bid this fall, 2024. So this project may also have the benefit of cost offset with ARPA funds. It's a separate task that I'll engage in probably sometime in October, November, if we see additional ARPA funds develop to soften the blow on our capital hit. But I will remind the commissioners that one of the benefits of having this come out of our capital account is it is a reimbursable expense with the permit. And I've already alerted our friends at the state that should it go that way, we'll be looking for them to pay us back. Number three, the county has completed its FY '22 audit, as I mentioned. We'll continue with the '23 audit and through the supplemental appropriation request, and it's expected to be completed in the fall of 2024. The '24 audit will commence in the second half of '25. Commissioner Stady, I just put this there because I think we both share this common interest in making sure we don't lose sight of an electric vehicle charging station grant through the state. I'm sharing emails with you on the progress that our partner in that program is making with the state as we await their action and EverSource's action to prove.
I had a great conversation last evening with an executive from EverSource on that very topic, and he had told me to follow up with him and maybe see if we can move it a little bit further. So we're trying, we're trying.
That'd be great. And number five, which I think is important to note, revenue collections in July were below benchmark. We had $662,000 collected a year ago. This year, July's collections were just under $600,000, so below bench. Not by a lot, but still, you know, something to keep an eye on as we begin fiscal year '25. However, recent real estate trends in August are signaling more favorable collections that may be the beginning of a revenue recovery as the Federal Reserve plans to reduce interest rates in September. So keep an eye on how all of this plays, but it's too early. We will watch the monthly revenue as it impacts our planned revenue by FY '25. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll open it up to any questions you may have. Last four, I think a total of three different motions to accomplish this work today in preparation for next week's advisory board meeting. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions relative to the first supplementary budget transfer?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chairman. So the first one I had through you to John, the OPEC, didn't, we did make an extra payment. That was a couple of years ago, didn't it?
It was. I think it was FY '23, maybe?
We had extra money, we did that.
That's when we had the money. We did not do it.
No, I got you. So where, where we're at right now, does that still put us on track to be, are we supposed to be self-funded within, I don't know, so many years?
So there is, to my understanding, there is no law or guidance from security experts on resolving your OPEC liability. You may be referring to the liability associated with the county retirement.
That's it.
And that is, I think, scheduled for solvency in 2030.
Okay.
If I recall the conversation with Paul Connors correctly.
There's a seven-year program.
Okay, yeah.
Something like that.
Okay.
Is that right, Commissioner Stady? Is that your question?
Yeah, that's it, that's it. Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
In light of the letter from Register O'Donnell, we want to pause the letter. He said, I think he touched upon the reduction. At the, I think to be consistent with our prior actions in terms of the budgets, we should make that reduction. But I would like to note for him publicly that if circumstances change, we can increase in revenue, or, you know, there's a bump, and if he demonstrates a need for that money or some money to be put back in, I don't know, you know, we, I am open to, you know, discussion of this. I want to just, you know, that. Can you send a letter to us on that?
One time, I don't. The chair says it's appropriate.
Okay, all right. All right. But I'm just saying, we're, we're gonna make it a vote on the supplemental requests, and that's part of the request. The tennis courts, are we abandoning the irrigation system? Where are we on that? Is that something we're not gonna?
No, the irrigation, the upgrade of the irrigation system.
Right.
Uh that was part of our capital plan. Um in FY twenty-five, there is no capital fund set aside for irrigation upgrade, but uh uh we hope to resume that in FY twenty-six.
Okay, good. And. That's it, that's it. Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I think the register wanted to hear. On this item?
Well, on the budget request, all right.
When the times are broke, it's, it's two, there's two aspects, as I understand it. There's the county mandate aspect and then making up the sixty-nine thousand, and that's what my letter was about. So when it's appropriate, Mr. Chair, what?
Yeah, I thought, I, I, I thought we're taking two votes, but if it's.
Yeah, I, I don't, you, you tell me when it's appropriate, because I'm still trying to understand. So you're lowering the county. Uh again, uh, you know, County Director Cronin on Friday sent a, sent a letter asking for input. And uh we sent, we sent the letter over, which I think you all got. Um so the county mandate, there's, there's, it's, it's two ways to solve that. Either you keep the county mandate the way it is which is still legal, and you could do that. Or if you're gonna cut the county mandate, then increase by that sixty-nine thousand out of the deeds excise, the exact amount. Again, if we could get a copy of the county closeout to check on the figures, we, we, as, as you saw in my letter, we, we don't have that, but uh assuming that the county director's numbers are, are correct, he's reducing the county mandate by sixty-nine thousand eight ninety-three eighteen. And again, we haven't come before you for any supplemental appropriations. We're trying to live within the budget. So what you can do, if, if, if you're gonna take County Director Cronin's recommendation of reducing that by that number, you can use the deeds excise money to offset that. And that way, there's no, there's no budget cuts, there's no, no effects on employees, there's no effects on the operation of the registry. As I said, I do believe we run a great registry, and there are challenges, uh certainly challenges when there's budget cuts to, to keep doing the services that the Norfolk County residents expect. So in that letter, you could see just in two fiscal, uh in the fiscal year that we're in for July and August, the registry statutory share by statute, that's by state law, is three-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and forty-four cents. So it's more than enough on the sixty-nine. So I'm trying to understand what your motion is. I, I get it. If you're going to reduce the county mandate, then I think there should be a vote. It's a very easy vote to use the sixty-nine that figure, the sixty-nine thousand uh figure out of the deeds excise and that, that that, that's a wash. And, and, and again, it also recognizes that the registry is allowed to use that deeds excise money. So. Well, I see the county director shaking his head, so I, I mean, I don't know what that means, but uh, you know.
Two motions, or, I don't know. Maybe, we need to vote the supplemental question. That's really what the vote is. So within the discussion, if I may politely, uh that we were cutting the county mandate.
Okay.
By sixty-nine thousand.
Cause I haven't seen what you have.
So whatever the number is.
Yeah.
And the reason I said that is because we want to be consistent to prior actions we took with the advisory board. However, um I want to be known that if revenue changes, things change, we trend up, and if you demonstrate a need, we'd be willing to take a second look and maybe put some money back. Now, you're saying something different, which I'm not sure I can clarify. You're saying that the deeds excise would allow you to put that money right back in.
Well, i- in other words, if you're cutting the mandate, and that seems County Director shaking his head, that's what the County Director wants. He wants you to cut your mandate. Okay, cut your mandate.
Right.
But that leaves the sixty-nine thousand eight ninety-three eighteen like a shortfall. And I'm just saying, use the deeds excise. You don't need to assess the deeds excise in two months. In fiscal twenty-five, in two months, the registry share, again, gotta read that court case. The registry share is three-hundred-and-seventy-two, almost three-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. There's more than enough to cover the sixty-nine thousand. That's not counting any deeds excised from last year. It's not counting any deeds excised, because as you saw in the letter, the judge very clearly said that the four-point-two million that was in there as of July first, twenty-twenty-three needs to be put back in the deeds excise fund, that that was the registry. So I don't, I, I don't really care where the sixty-nine thousand um comes from, but so if you're gonna vote to reduce the mandate, what's your next vote? Are you, are you cutting jobs again at the registry or cutting positions? I think the easy fix is just, y- y- you know, the, you know, in order, am, am I, am I right, John? You need to make up the sixty-nine thousand.
That's correct.
Okay, so we do, we have agreed. We have agreed. Uh that's a, that's a movement. Um so again, I, I recognize you, it's pretty clear, you, you, you wanna be consistent. You're cutting the mandate.
Okay, yeah.
But now, that leaves a sixty-nine thousand dollar gap. Are you gonna cut our budget? We, we're living with our budget. We're not one of these departments that's coming in for supplemental appropriations.
Maybe that's not, that's beyond the uh scope of the item we each send. And we may need to ask to, you may have to have requests to come to us, I think, maybe? I'm looking globally for the legal thing.
Well, I, I'm just wondering what you're doing.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm kinda understand what you're saying. I understand. That's what you're saying. I'm saying the budget, we have to get ready for the advisory board. We need to vote on it today. It's on the agenda. It's legal, you know, and I think with, with right or wrong, good or bad, I feel to be consistent, we need to follow what we've been doing before. So we're gonna, I'm, I'm gonna make the motion.
At least four years.
Right. So I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this. Now, the impact on your budget is a reduction of sixty-nine thousand, right?
But you don't have to do, you don't have to make any cuts because the registry has by law, chapter sixty-four D, section twelve A, deeds excise monies. And in fiscal twenty-five, and I attached it to the letter, you could see this three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand just from July and August. That's more than enough to cover it. Or you can go into the deeds excise fund that is the registry share per the judge's ruling and, and, and take it out of that. I don't care where you take it out of. I don't, I'm coming here saying that the registry's budget should not be cut. And uh doesn't have to be cut if you use the deeds excise. So I haven't heard, you can cut the mandate. I haven't heard, what's the recommendation of the County Director as to how that sixty-nine thousand is getting made up?
Sure, okay. Commissioners, in your packet, um there includes a spreadsheet that we prepared that would show as a result of current condition of registry, itemized areas um by count, copies of register. There are thirteen line items that we would recommend be reduced to offset this proposed sixty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-three-dollar reduction. Um in the event that the commissioners uh want to extend some benefit of time to the register to exa- examine this further, because in his letter to you, he uh offered um two options. One is to do nothing, and the other is to take money from deeds to offset this reduction. He did not offer any reduction to his accounts. This au- this detail does that. So if you'd like to give him the benefit of time to review that proposal, um you could still take a motion contingent upon feedback from the registrar on where he would alter that uh plan or otherwise accept it for um fulfilling this reduction request before next week.
So this is the first I've learned that the recommendation is, is, is cuts. There doesn't have to be any cuts in the budget.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt the speaker for just a minute because he continues to challenge logic? Could you read the email, um Register O'Donnell, that I sent you um on September sixth? Could you read that for the benefit of all of us?
I've, I respond, actually, I think I attached it.
You did, I know. I'm just wondering if you mind reading the section where it wrote.
I'm talking to the three commissioners, because they're the ones, they're the ones that are elected to, to run the place, not an abusive uh uh County Director who abuses power and doesn't treat people well. Yes, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to solve this respectfully.
Your feedback on guidance on where within the registry deeds budget this reduction could come from. He was asked on September sixth. Thank you.
That's, that's because, that's because you're running the show. You say cuts and everyone cuts. You know, this is now becoming retaliatory against the registry deeds, you know? Um, you know, the citizens know that we run an excellent registry deeds despite the constant challenges and roadblocks that County Director uh in this administration puts up with the registry. This, more importantly, on June twenty-eighth twenty-twenty-four, and you people made a motion for the judge to reconsider it, and she denied your motion. She was very clear that the deeds excise, the statutory share of deeds excise is the registry's and can be used for registry operations. So for, for the County Director to go right to cuts is just, you know, it's, it lacks transparency. It's really about retaliation about these lawsuits, and you don't have to make cuts. Again, if you don't wanna, it's li- when you say do nothing, that's still a legal avenue. You can keep the voted mandate that you did, because the voted mandate, the statute says it has to be no less. It can always be a little more, but if you don't wanna do that, I respect that. And the three of you have indicated you wanna reduce the mandate. Well, use the deeds excise. There's more than enough registry share deeds excise. I know the, I know the County Director thinks all that deeds excises is the county's, but again, the judge said otherwise. And it's time to start.
So I did.
It was ninth inning, but.
It's ninth inning.
Judge didn't find it your way.
It, it's not a big.
Ninth inning, hail Marys.
Right. I mean, it's like, you keep relying on that, and I, I commend you for that, but we're not done. We're not done. But still in the middle. So to me, that argument is not superfluous, but it's kind of over here. It's on, it's on the side. It's given, I'm giving consideration. I think we all are, but we have to kinda say it's, it's on the side, in the bullpen.
Where's the, to the bullpen, where's the deeds excise, the registry share? Cause the county got five-hundred-and-sixty thousand, as was mentioned. The registry share was three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. Where's the consideration not to use that deeds excise money? Sixty-nine thousand isn't the whole three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. Just so there are no cuts. Our budget gets cut all the time. And I'm starting to think that it's not about bad, you know, you know, economy. It just seems to be retaliatory. And never mind the full amount, how much money was in that full amount that got transferred out that the judge said shouldn't have got transferred out? It was, wasn't it four-point-two million in, in July of twenty-twenty-two? Yes. So if the judge is saying that is the deeds excise, the registry share, and it should be in the deeds excise fund, I'm not even saying use that. You're right. Maybe, maybe, maybe you, hail Mary will win somewhere, maybe. And but uh what I am saying is the deeds excise, I think we could all agree that has come in for the registry. We, we should be able to use it here without having to cut. I'm like, I haven't even looked at his things, whether it's employees or, or, we, we cut. In fact, it was noted by the advisory board at the last budget hearing, like, hey, the registry has picked up its fair share of cuts to balance whatever budget you're doing. You can use the deeds excise money to solve this. County Director doesn't want to. And maybe the majority of the commissioners or all the commissioners are gonna say, cut, you don't have to.
Before I recognize you, John, the last three or four years, we've used the same method.
Yes.
Nothing changed, correct?
No, sir.
One year we gave them.
That's correct.
What year was that?
FY twenty-three.
And how much was that?
Ninety-four thousand one hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
Because it was a new.
That's correct.
So nothing changes for us.
The approach.
With that money company, yeah. With that.
Eight, two years ago?
Yeah, you know, the ninety thousand.
I'd have to ask the treasurer.
I'll tell you where it came from. It came from the deeds excise money, the registry's share of deeds excise money. That's what the budget called for.
So as the register just indicated, we always cut his budget, but say, an erroneous statement.
Okay, I knew one of them.
Well, I'm looking at numbers. I mean, again, I, I don't know if the numbers are accurate, not accurate. I have to take it as fake value. The, it seems like there's a generous amount of money coming in. I don't understand why we're troubled by seventy thousand monies portraying deeds excise, even if we, even if we take our case, that we win the case. I would think there's sufficient funds to cover that seventy thousand in that excise. You know, you take the formula and you rework it towards our, our formula. I think there's still money in there. You know, I would say, I don't wanna see people cut, lose their job, if there is money there to, you know, use.
When have we cut and taken any, John?
I don't wanna do that. I'm saying, he's saying, if we cut it, there could be a loss of people.
There is no proposed loss of people in presentation of account cuts that are given to the register.
I'll study them. I, you know, it would have been nice to get it before this meeting. It's typical of training. I have to review, but I, I would echo what Commissioner Stady said. It's an easy solve. You don't have to make cuts. You just desire to make cuts. The, 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 the revenues from the deeds excise pursuant to state law belongs to the registry. I know that's not recognized, and maybe you're gonna win. Hail Mary. Um but that's, that's the solution. Sixty-nine thousand from the deeds excise, and it just solves it. And, you know, you keep saying you wanna move forward, it, it just doesn't appear that way. Um and, and, you know, I wanna move forward. I'm giving you an easy solution. There's the solution. I don't see any other department making cuts right now. I see a supplemental appropriation that had some significant increases and people looking for money and departments looking for money. We're not looking for money. We're not looking for extra supplemental appropriations in A, B, C account. We're just saying, look, you gave us a budget, you're taking sixty-nine thousand and some odd dollars away. We'll make it up with the deeds excise that has already been collected in two months. Wait, wait till Sep- end of September. There'll be even more than the three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. That's the registry share. I think that's a fair solution, and it would go a long way to trying to, let's move things forward, uh so things get better.
All right. Thank you, Major. I, I'm gonna move that we approve, at least on this part, the fiscal year twenty-five supplemental budget request I presented uh in the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand? Seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight?
That is correct.
That's it.
Is that right?
This is.
So just to be clear, the register is discussing um what is apparently item number fourteen on your agenda.
Right.
We were into, but they're overlapped. We, we specifically called out agenda number fourteen is a separate vote. So as you're moving, Commissioner Stady politely, just stick to the first supplemental piece as you are, and we'll deal with the registry piece.
That's all I was gonna do.
Yes, 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 I'm just.
Thank you. So I'm moving the item fourteen, no, I'm item thirteen. I move in the first supplemental budget, uh transfer capital for approval had presented, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
That's three to zero. Thank you. Number fourteen, recalibration of fiscal year registry of deeds budget. I don't know that there's anything to be said.
Did your motion just cover the um entire supplemental, inclusive, or just the capital?
I, I moved the, what presented to us, the.
Cause there are a bunch of different motions I have. We have the HVAC project audit.
So we have supplemental, we have transfers, and of course, the cap. They're all part of that piece you were.
Oh, the, you, you mean the agricultural school?
All of those things.
Request and the treasurer's office request?
Right, so.
So you prefer me to take them one at a time?
I think so, yes, to be very clear on what you're approving.
Okay. All right.
And motions have been advanced. Okay.
And where are the motions?
I get the motions.
Yes, you do.
I'm gonna read the motion.
Yeah, okay.
So um first motion is to approve the Superior Court HVAC project with amount of two million dollars funded from previously authorized capital improvement fund monies in fiscal year twenty-four, which are reverted to the unexpended balance fund.
Right, that's second. Second.
Which we made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's the first.
Yeah, item number two, motion to approve fiscal year twenty-five first supplemental budget totaling two million, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars for the projects as listed. So I have to list these three projects. Uh item A is Dedham Superior Court HVAC. Item B is two FY twenty-five budget transfers in the amount of nine hundred dollars from the county treasurer's office, temporary salaries account, and forty thousand five hundred dollars from the Norfolk County Agricultural High School Contractual Services account. That's B. C is uh one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars in supplemental items for IT Wallaston Recreational Facility in the county commissioner's office. That's the second motion. The total is two million, two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars for those projects.
Which we made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh it is a vote next.
The third motion is pursuant to master analog chapter sixty-four D, section twelve subsection B, to amend the fiscal year twenty-five registry of deeds budget by removing sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighteen cents from thirteen light on items as provided in the attachment for a total FY twenty-five appropriation of three million eighty-two thousand six hundred and four dollars and eighty-two cents. And I believe Commissioner Stady had said earlier um that if the register wishes to uh revise those cuts within the budget, uh we'd be open to that. And if at a later time in the fiscal year, if money becomes available, we'll be, and it was a need, we'd be open to uh increasing these uh budget.
I'll second.
I ju- I just find it incredible that you have a motion all typed up. You had this all typed up, and it was never sent to the registry. So I, I, you know, I, I guess that just shows you what things are. You have an easy solution because the deeds excise by law is the registry's. You don't have to make cuts. But you, 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 you tip your hand when you don't even have the courtesy to send this information over. But that's how he operates, and that's why he was found in violation of the law by a Superior Court judge, and actually by an.
The direction of the, they asked you for. And your answer was.
I, I gave my input.
I understand. Your answer was not. I understand, your answer was not to cut, but to come back with your solution.
But you have these cuts in specific detail, and it's just being handed to me. And it, you know, it's clear that the decision was already.
Bill, don't feel bad, I just cut it myself.
Well, well, that's.
I just cut it myself.
I, I get it, I, I, I think, I don't think that's a very transparent way to regard it. You should have got it sooner.
I got it, I was at a nine one one ceremony during, that's very important day.
Here we are, I'm just speaking for myself.
But I just got that myself, but that's the director is suggesting.
Getting off the.
He suggested.
Motion probably had it made in second.
You're taking it too.
Motion has been made in second.
There's a motion made in second, I think. That'll complete it, the whole process. And the last, or the most recent one, is there another one?
That's it.
No, we need a vote to be voted on.
Motion made in second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, that completes it.
Thanks, Bill.
For today, for the people, thank you. Number fifteen, July trial balance for acceptance, director.
Bravo. Thank you, Commissioner Stady. The treasurer's office has advanced the uh, attached July trial balance to your packet. Um, this shows some activity uh, so far in fiscal year twenty five. Uh, that I mentioned earlier, lower than expected revenue. We do expect a rebound in August, we'll keep an eye on that. So before you today's, the option to accept the July twenty twenty four FY twenty five trial balance.
Any questions?
I'm like.
We have a seconded.
What are we voting, I, I've lost track now, what, what, what are we doing now? I thought it said recalibration of registry budget.
No, we did that, that was.
This is the trial balance.
We're on trial balances.
Trial balance.
It's in your packet, this document.
All right, I'm sorry, long day. I don't know what the motion is, what number you have, I can't read it.
Okay.
I can't vote something I can't read. I can't, it's too small.
This did come up in the past.
It's way too small. It is, I can't see it.
Okay, we, we've come up before, did we have any discussion?
I've asked this before, the numbers are so tiny, I cannot read this information, it's not fair.
You can certainly table and announce the treasurer to change the plot.
I agree.
Okay, wanna do that next week?
Yeah, I agree, thank you.
Motion to table the July trial balance.
Perfect.
For further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Number fifteen, and then you do have, we refer to this one, number fifteen, report of the county director.
I have two items, commissioners, I'm pleased to let you know that with the very hard work of uh, our own Phil Iantoska, the uh, state has provided approval for scheduled costs. FY twenty three, this is our trial court uh, reimbursement cost. Um, this process, as you may know, if you think back several months, Phil, um, hosts the auditors from uh, trial courts. They're working stand every year in a cycle. As a result of his work, uh, the county is favorable uh, to the two hundred and forty nine thousand dollars from the original estimate. I want to thank Phil again, this is a very intensive um, review annually, and does a really nice job putting it all together. So uh, it'll be before you, likely next week, cause it just came in yesterday, for your acceptance, but I want to let you know it's fresh out of the press, very happy with it. And the other item I've already updated you on was the ARPA, so the interesting item I will.
Stop there.
Thank you.
Okay. There isn't shared any other topics, I don't have, I have one, and then I have a memorial, two memorials. Last call, yes, Jim?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the uh, treasurer's office contacted me this afternoon that uh, the county treasurer has received a memorandum of understanding between the executive office of administration and finance, the retirement system, its actuary, uh, public employee retirement commission, um, regarding the sheriff M O E. Uh, this particular document needs to be endorsed by the county commissioners, as well as uh, county sheriff, uh, the secretary of A N F, and the two other sidees. The treasurer asks for your consideration to sign this and endorse this agreement today, if you're inclined. I believe Michael was here, Joe D was.
If you think it's in order, you can do it.
It is, in order, uh.
I know what it's about, I mean.
It is an annual effort to endorse this, an efforts of effort, uh, that extends deeds monies to the Norfolk County Retirement System for the retired sheriffs. So if the commissioners are inclined to endorse it today, as an emergency, we can put it through, we can put it on here next week.
Okay, do you understand the commissions?
Yeah, I would appreciate a motion just to endorse that, uh.
And I move that we approve the agreement between the executive office of administration and finance, Norfolk County Retirement System, its actuary, the public employee retirement commission, P RAC, an actuary in Norfolk County treasurer, and Norfolk County uh, commissioners. Uh, and the agreement as outlined and presented uh, this day in September. Second.
Which you made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You signed it, good.
All right, I have two other items, both of the memorials. If there's nothing else, I just go ahead and mention the passing of John Sullivan of Braintree passed last week. John was ninety four years old, um, resident uh, of Milton and then Braintree. And uh, John uh, worked for twenty years at Norfolk County, and he retired as a supervisor in the maintenance division in nineteen ninety seven. Um, I did read John's, I, I happened to read John's obituary over the weekend, and uh, although I didn't have the pleasure of working with John, you know, I know many people that did, so not yet. Quite a legacy and quite a family throughout the South Shore. Um, and I just want to adjourn today's meeting in memory of John. And uh, this is in keeping with remembering all of our retirees and sometimes active employees who pass on. And uh, I have a further one today, and I know uh, all of us in our own way celebrated in our own towns, and I know Commissioner Stady attended the nine eleven memorial today, but today is the twenty third anniversary of nine eleven.
Amazing.
All of us, without question, in our Norfolk County family and residents of our county, lost their lives and were touched by this tragic, tragic occurrence. And uh, I'm adj- adjourn today's meeting in memory of John Sullivan, past employee, and always, of course, uh, reflecting on nine eleven.
I'll stay there. Uh, will be.
I, I, I may say something, so nine eleven, we all know where we were.
Right.
When nine eleven hit, and our lives changed. We'll never forget this.
No.
And they're always close to us in our hearts, and many of them, uh, lost their lives saving out, but it was, it was a man. But, but, but again, second from that, I, I did know John Sullivan, and I, I worked with John.
Okay, good.
And I just wanted to say that uh, he was a fine gentleman. He was a strong advocate for the county, and he ran a great name. He'll always be um, here in my heart, and I'll be at the funeral mass, so.
Thank you, motion adjourned, thank you very much.
I will be adjourned at. Second.
Which you made, Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, we're gonna meet you next week, Mr. Commissioner.